You've all had a chance to review your minutes from the last meeting. Is there any additions or corrections?
Make the motion to accept.
Craig and Kathy. All those in favor? Opposed? So moved. Is Mike's?
Yes. Yep.
Mike, you're up.
We've recently sent out all the invoices for the inter-locals for IT services. We should have gotten the checks back mainly by now, I believe. So what we wanted to do is we had to, we'll have to pay for the licenses and so on that we're going to be using coming up later this year. So I wanted to see if we could get what they paid into us back into a place where I can gain access to that and help pay off the licensing fees for this year. So I'm asked, we would have gotten back about $72,400 already.
Is that annually or is that like a monthly thing or quarterly? Is it annual?
Yeah, it's a, we do have some monthly fees that are going to amount to later on about $20,000 a year. But this is just what we've taken in right now, so.
You're saying we're going to get licensing fees we'll get from the municipalities or?
These would be usage fees, bandwidth networking usage fees that'll, for the whole year will accumulate about $20,000 at the end of the year, yeah, from them.
So this would be just a loan essentially to pay off?
Yeah, yeah. What we do is we pay for the access fees and then I charge them back depending upon what they used. So I won't know until I actually get the bills and on what they use and then I charge them back on a quarterly basis.
So Mike, at budget time, why don't you just put that money into your budget and then whatever goes into County General, it just stays there so we don't have to do an additional?
Well, it's hard for me to know what it's going to be because licensing changes and prices increase and so on. So it's hard to tell. It's always a guess. I do have to pay it, by the way. I mean, some of this has already been paid out of what we have here because some of it's due in January from our people that we get the software from. So I've had to pay it already. I take it out of my budget and I pay for it and trying to get the money back into my budget that.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, budget something, maybe so it's not such a large chunk, but I've got no problem with, you know.
Mike, motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, your approval, the additional appropriation for IT. All those in favor?
Mike, real quick, did that, I had sheriffed the rest of that 72, what was it, 72,000, 78,000 from last year's labor cost to finish up that project we brought up last, maybe the February month meeting, might have been January, maybe.
I got one is I'm going to ask for that to come back in in April's meeting for this.
Okay. And what, could you unmeta, memory loss, what was that for?
Well, that's for the.
The tie-in?
Secondary circuit.
Okay.
That we had and so there was a bunch of issues that happened last year where we couldn't get people in to do the work and then deliveries were so slow to get in equipment and switching and so on. Switching alone took us over six months to get the switches in.
That's right.
So they came in mid-December and so.
And they had manpower issues and couldn't finish?
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of issues that are basically dealing with COVID. So the process to lay it out, we thought we would have it all done last year, but because of those issues, it's, we're finishing out the right, and therefore we didn't get the stuff paid because we don't know what the final number is going to be.
I just wanted to refresh around that, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
So that'll be coming in April?
Yeah. Right, right now we've gotten all the people that were supposed to do the work, they're kind of holding to their quotes that they made in 2020, believe it or not. I mean, we kind of went with people locally and they kind of held on to basically what they said it was going to be. I know their price has gone up, but it was pretty nice of them. Apparently that's what it's going to be right now, I think, so.
And this is stuff that we previously approved then since it's supposed to happen last?
Yeah, it was approved in late 2020, like in December. So then we started and tried and getting people to come in and do the work and so on. And just the fact of trying to come into buildings with COVID and that sort of stuff. And then some of the contractors, they had really some pretty extreme issues. So they absolutely couldn't even come in. We had to find different vendors even to try and help us out, so.
Mike, are you going to be coming back to us with additional software maintenance additionals? Because I'm seeing it's zeroed out, that line item is zeroed out for this year, but in the past it's been almost 400,000.
Well, we added a whole bunch in so we could specifically show what it was that we were paying for. So it was always even before I was hired in, it was just one great big line item and it was just a catch-all. I found it difficult to try and explain all the different things that were in there and to make it clear for all of you.
It shifted to the other departments too, didn't it?
What's that?
The line items are on different departments, line items now, aren't they?
No, not really. It was voted down, we couldn't do that. We asked some departments that we do, ask them to pay when it's feasible to do so until we get that changed, until we can come up and say that we're going to start putting IT fees into each department on what they're going to do, then that's not currently what we're doing. I mean, I've requested it for many years since I've been here, but it's always been voted down. Places like the Sheriff's Department has already been doing it for years. They, they basically pay for the stuff that they have, you know. I order for them and I make sure that it's going to be workable on our systems and everything. But then I turn the invoices over to them and then they pay for them. And then, you know, before I order, I make sure that here's the quotes, do you have enough money to pay for this before we order, you know? And prosecutor's office, about the same way for us. But we got other departments that that's not how they work or how they operate, so. But that's where we're at. It's a long story and it's an involved story and it's been voted down almost every time that we come up and ask for a draw and let's, let's see what it costs for all of our departments for IT stuff. I have spreadsheets already made out, I already do it with all the other cities and towns all across Adams County. I mean, I come in a year ahead of time, I anticipate this is what things are going to cost so that they can turn in their budget ahead of time. But they have to have their budget in at the same time as we have to have ours in. So we do that and that's what this inter-local agreement or these funds are coming from because we are able to anticipate. I could turn in the invoices to them on, it was right around January 17th because we did the light work ahead of time and Mark had the contracts already completed so I could start invoicing immediately, so.
Have you seen a trend upward in licensing fees like inflation and everything else?
Yeah, yeah, and hardware fees because the same thing, they're really going up right now. Just to give you an idea, Dennis, about a month later, all PCs went up about $150 from February to late February. We asked for some other ones here, they were kind of specialized machines for the police department and they drastically have gone up. We bought some for the Sheriff's Department in late December and now they've, you know, gone up a lot, like not quite double because they're kind of specialty machines. So now I'm trying to negotiate with the companies to try and get those prices back down because we just bought some in December to see if they can match it, which I kind of pride myself on trying to do a good job with that to get the prices back down, you know?
We know you do.
Sometimes unsuccessful, sometimes not so successful, but, but yeah, software, I haven't seen a real jump so much in software as much as hardware.
Reality.
We have long lead times at that. One of the delays in last year was because, like I said, we couldn't get parts in for six months or longer. We have, for instance, Shannon, she was supposed to get a printer when she was hired in because we'd never had a HR director before. So that was ordered when she was hired. It's still not in yet today and they have no ETA on when it's going to come in as of, yeah, as of early this week. I've, I've asked them and they said, no, no, it's, it's sending out in the harbor someplace in the Pacific.
I don't have any other questions.
Anything else for Mike?
Yeah, I'm done.
You're done. Thank you, Mike. You have a request for an additional appropriation for software maintenance? All those in favor?
Some of the questions.
It was Fred and John that made the motion and seconded it.
All those in favor?
Yeah, they all, they all, yeah, they all agree.
All those in favor? It's done. Okay, Sheriff.
Good morning. I think you know why I'm here, why we're all here. This is a request for APR money and do you want to start letting them know that this is an approved expenditure through APR? Do you need to explain anything?
I sent a memo to everybody, I'm sorry, and belatedly getting it out there, but we did initially have the request from the sheriff last year for this particular project. In researching it, it would come under revenue loss. That would be the only category under which Mark and I could find any kind of exception. Since then, a final rule has been issued in January, which specifically clarified and expanded the revenue loss provision, giving essentially a standard deduction type thing. Everybody gets $10 million, no questions asked, that they can spend on anything with regards to government services. So I provided that information and sent an attachment giving you the specific rule summary. I mean, the whole thing is about 500 pages, so I didn't give you that, I gave you the summary. So you can see exactly, it is in fact approved use for ARP funds. And I also sent you just the initial information, the overview of the prospectus, but I think Dan is far better equipped to be able to answer your questions and give you more detail. So with that, I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you. What we're asking for is changing our RMS JMS software system from Central Square's we currently have used to Spillman. Spillman is a company that is owned by Motorola, which also owns our WatchGuard system and our radio systems. So that in itself is one benefit because now they all integrate better because it's all the same mother company. I have five main points I want to talk about. If you have questions, answer questions. Chad Thurston, the chief deputy prosecutor, he's here to answer because this is what he used up in Allen County his whole career. So he'll be able to explain things to you that I don't have user and knowledge of. But one of the first thing is the operate, I'm not going to use the right term, so Mike, if he's still here, don't have a heart attack, Eric, don't have a heart attack. The system that Central Square uses now for basically our security, our UAC, it's not upgradable, it's out of date. So it's a, it's a weak point of our network, basically, because you have to have admin rights to that machine for it to work and we don't want admin rights on all our machines out there. So that's one of the important ones. Second, we have sharing capabilities that any agency that uses Spillman in the state, so the name files. And right now we're the only, only agency in northeast Indiana that is not on Spillman. So all of our neighboring counties all have Spillman. And if we run a name in Central Square, we get that. If I run a name in Spillman, I get that name coverage for any agency that uses that. So it's a huge, huge benefit to us out in the field. And also you see with us, you have the head of each law enforcement agency in this county because we all use the same system and everybody is in support of this being changed. The search capabilities of what, this system's called ComStat and this is where he can speak highly to this. This is, ComStat is an analytical tool to where you can really analyze your types of calls, GPS locations of types of calls and you can find hotspots and stuff. Allen County, Fort Wayne City, they use it immensely, large, large cities do. We can use it if need be. Our area is a little bit smaller, we kind of know where our hotspots are, but this is proven data that we can use if we need to. The customer service with Central Square is subpar, plain and simple. I took over eight months last year to set our contract with them because they kept losing people and then I'd have to start all over again. So Eric and Mike can tell you, trying to get projects done are a nightmare with Central Square. Spillman is not that much of an issue, talking to other agencies that use that. And again, the capabilities of merging our information, now our videos into our RMS and stuff, since this is a mother company of WatchGuard, Spillman, Motorola, there's so much more capabilities that we'll be able to have with our different hardware systems communicating with each other. It's just, it's a great tool. It has expansion capabilities, so if we want to, we can get into our evidence-based things and bar scan and all that type of stuff too. We're not there yet. We want to start this process. This is a 12 to 15-month process of switching over to this. And here's what you guys want to know. This is what the commissioner's recommended and also what I recommend, is the initial startup cost with one year of support and maintenance is $697,046.47. It is expensive and that is switching over our system with about a two-year backup of old case systems being transferred over and then older than that, we have to keep one system up and running of Central Square that way. If we have to go and find an old case, we have it. But we're only going to transfer about the last two years of information over to the new system. Other agencies that have done this, you tend not to have to go back that far, that much time, so it's not cost-effective to transfer all your files or even five years of your files over because then the cost is astronomical. What questions do you guys have? Yes?
So you said that dollar amount was 697,000?
That is correct.
Okay, so the, under the additional for the ARPA funds, is that the equipment for 600,000?
No.
No additional was.
Webex coolers or fillers.
It would have to wait till next month for an additional if you decide to.
Right, today is for presentation, information, discussion, so you can get more information and it would have to then be advertised at whatever sum you decide on.
Yeah, I have not made a request for funds yet. This will be, this would be the request, I guess, next month if you approve it, there'd be the approval for that amount.
Okay.
So does other areas of what, especially over this, they also just only transfer back two years and they maintain another system as well?
That is correct. If you've had an older system, you keep that system on one computer with that old information on it because it's just, like if we wanted to switch all of our files, it was going to be like, I think about 1.6 million, that's where they.
But it's not practice, so.
No, it's not practice because usually you don't have to go back that far for anything.
I mean, to maintain the older system for the older stuff.
It just sits there.
Do a couple.
It just sits there on a, on one computer, we'll keep one computer and that is our Central Square computer. If we have to go back and archiving, we'll just go to that one computer.
And then yours, two through five, it looks like it's, maintenance is 240,000?
Correct, that was just something that they put in there, but we, we pay now with Central Square, I believe it's roughly $76,000 a year for that. That's that, we just budget that. We, yeah, we budget that. Actually, it's going to be a little less, I think it's around 72 or 68,000. Divide that by four and that'll give that number, but I budget that already and we'll continue to budget that, so that's why I'm not asking for that to be put in. That's just using ARPA money that I would already be spending and budgeting for anyways.
Okay, so that's just future budget money essentially?
Yeah, they just, if you wanted to give your five years of maintenance and use it out of ARP, but that's the cost, and then the total cost would be 937,618. I'm not asking for that because we already budget that annual maintenance in our normal budget, so I'll just continue to do so unless you want to use ARPA money for that, but I don't see the need for it.
So how long would a system like this be expected to last?
Allen County, I mean, there's, they've been using it for decades.
Oh, really?
Yes, I mean, this is a company that's been around for a long time. It's one of the leading companies in the RMS CAD JMS systems. So it's just, yeah, they update things, their security is top-notch. Actually, to be totally transparent with you, that's probably one negative effect with Spillman is they don't like to share our information, meaning if an outside vendor or something like that, if I want to share my crime stats with something else and have to get it from Spillman, they don't like doing that because they don't want people in their system. They do it and it's done, but I'd say that's the complaint, biggest complaint I've heard about Spillman is they don't like their information being used in other places. But it's done, they just don't like doing it.
And so those maintenance costs and they upgrade and any issues you have.
Correct, just like we do now with Central Square, that's what that maintenance for, tech support, anything like that, we have issues, that's what that's based for. And it's also licensing fees for the terminals and stuff. Excuse me, just kind of what Mike says too, I have MOUs with Burn, Decatur, excuse me, and they pay in every year to the general fund, their cost of them having their terminals and units and stuff too. But it's in my budget and then it just sits in general that I don't do that for.
We get money from Decatur.
Yes, you do. Yeah, Geneva, Burn, and Decatur all pay in. Monroe is not on the system, so they don't pay into it, but they're not, they don't use it.
Is the 700,000 just to install like in your department and then Burn would have to pay for theirs and Geneva, or is it just county-wide?
This is the county-wide cost.
The county, okay.
This is based on, with the meetings we had with the number of users that the other departments have and stuff, this, this is a county-wide installation.
Do you know how long will it take to train the officers to be proficient in this?
I'm going to pass that to you, the training, how long does it take officers to catch up?
From my experience, to start off, I was first introduced to Spillman, I started with Steben County Sheriff's Department in 1993 and that's when they had bought that system and it was a fully integrated system. I would say it took between working the bugs out of installing a brand-new system and training, it probably was a full year for things. Not that that system wasn't fully usable, it was just training everybody up to speed as far as what its capabilities are. And quite frankly, I spent since 1993 with Spillman. When I moved up, took a job with the Fort Wayne Police Department in 1995, they got, they went to Spillman within that year, so I got to see it twice. The capabilities till to this day, I don't fully understand because there's so many. I can sit here and speak to you hours for the many benefits that Spillman provides and no, they're not paying me to say this, it's a fact. And I don't think it's overstated to say that when we look at database and communications, it is the most important component in government infrastructure. This is your foundation that you will be building on and Spillman allows that. And not only are you doing it here, but you're expanding yourself to all the other counties surrounding the state. You will, you will be able to data share and, and the law enforcement agencies actively share with one another. And this isn't just law enforcement, this is fire, this is dispatch, EMS, hang on how far your package goes. But, so the short answer, I would say about a year, but there's much more to it than that, just because of the many things that this thing can do. It basically integrates everything into one platform, which makes it ideal for a number of reasons, especially if it were to come to reporting, for instance, if you wanted any information or data, it's, it's quick at the fingertips. So there's a lot, there is a lot to it.
Is this the house, like those MCT, that's gone?
No, 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 this will use the MCTs, none of that changes. We still have the MCTs in our cars and it just feeds information into Spillman and it retrieves information from Spillman. It's just like our dispatch center is now that we use in Central Square, it's just Spillman. Our MCTs will still be used, none of that changes.
And does it hold like video evidence?
It can, because especially now that it's owned by Motorola, you can actually tag your body camera and car cameras right into a case and it all stores in one place. So yes, it integrates that capability, which we do not have now.
Well, the hardware portion of the video storage, like for the JMS stuff, you had to upgrade some of your servers to?
Okay, that's different, that's jailhouse.
That's just your?
That's just jailhouse, which is its own system.
There's a JMS in here too.
JMS, but you're talking the accurate cameras, which is the security cameras in the jail themselves, that, that is not tied into that, that's separate security.
In-house stuff.
In-house only, yeah. That is not associated with this whatsoever, that is separate. And yeah, we had to buy extra storage because by liability standards, we need to have storage for 180 days for court claims against us and we only have 45 days worth of video. So that, that is that system, this is completely different.
I guess I was just looking for anything else that we're currently storing and maintaining evidence-wise or whatever that could be transferred over and free, maybe free up some space here or?
Not necessarily. This will have its own servers and that's part of the price, but we're still going to keep our WatchGuard servers and that type of stuff. It's just, if I want to do an incident report and I have video from my car, I can attach that video to that incident report and then it's all stored. So if the prosecutor wants to pull up my case, the case is there, all the attaches and the video's there. They don't have to go search for the video elsewhere. It can all be bumbled together in that capacity, but we're still going to keep our WatchGuard servers. This price includes new servers for the storage of the Spillman information, the CAD and all that stuff. And going back to your question too of that, once we get approval, if we get approval for this, once Spillman is given the green light, it is anywhere from a 12 to 15-month timeframe for the system to be transferred up and running and our training will be included in that timeframe too. They provide training, they come and give training to all of our personnel. We will also have what I would consider trainers ourselves, that they can then go and train other departments and our newer people when they come on.
The yearly licensing fee, is it going to be significantly more than what we're currently paying?
If someone has a calculator, 240, 571 divided by four, what is that?
62,000.
So right now that's $12,000 in minimum, less than what we pay now. So our annual maintenance fee is less than what we pay now for Central Square.
So the towns are going to have to come up with a whole bunch more money?
No, actually they should be paying less.
It's just the initial startup cost to get going?
Correct, that's, that's this price.
Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
How long are we required to keep these records and does it necessitate additional storage capacity?
Eventually, I would say yes, we're, we will always have to add storage capacity later on live because we do keep the records as long as we're on the system, we want to keep that, that information live on that system so you can always go back to it. I'm sure there's a way that we could probably archive some of the very old stuff and where it's not on the user's servers much, we can kind of, I don't know if I'm, I'm not using the right term, I'm sure Mike's rollover. We can put it in the grave a little bit so it's there, but we don't use it much, but we're always going to. But we're always going to, like I said, this system's been running in agencies for twenty years. So I'm sure they've had to add storage to it over the time.
That's our evidence box?
Basically, yes, our, uh, because we don't keep paper anymore and so we have to keep that digital file alive. Any other questions?
Well, maybe just a comment, I guess, for, I mean, I think this project sounds like a really good one. But I know we've got, uh, Regional Sewer District coming with another request here a little bit as well. Um, I, I've been kind of saying it for a little while, but I'd like to see if we can come up with an kind of an organized way to go through all of these at one time. Because what I'm a little bit afraid of is that we keep having a good project, yes, good project, yes, and then it's all gonna be gone without really being able to compare them, you know, or see what all the options are. So we have a lot of money to spend, I just want to make sure we're doing it well. So I don't know, would that be through commissioners or how we do that, but?
I've already started drafting, I actually have a draft of a recapitulation resolution that will be issued by the commissioners on a regular basis, listing all of the ARP fund commitments throughout the course of the year that we have it. So, um, at that point, when that gets passed, certainly that would be available to the council to review at any time.
Yeah, because I, I, to me, I would like to be able to have maybe one long session on it, be a work session or whatever. It would be where we can hear all of them, okay? There's this one, regional sewer, here's what the options for broadband would be, here's the options for more water. What are all the options? Then we can kind of decide all at one time what's what, so. I, I don't really want to vote to, for me at least, approve anything until I know what all the options are.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying, I completely agree with you. I just, I, I don't know, you sit around and wait, well, maybe something better come up, well, maybe something better come up.
We don't want that.
You know, we've approved everything that's came through, but and there, there's nothing else to really approve. And it's gotta be spent by twenty twenty four or at least a plan in place. So there is, there's that side too. And I, like I said, you know, you've said before, you don't want to nickel and dime it and?
Right, I don't, I'm just brainstorming, I don't know if it's a good or bad idea, but? What if we set like a, I don't know if this would be Dennis and commissioners kind of working together, but if we set like a day, a couple of months out, where any proposals that are out there, let's get them in. If there's anybody that wants to have a, they want someone to look into something, they would say, hey, is this an option? And then we can try and schedule it maybe two, three months from now. And that way we have all the options at one time and kind of give everybody the chance to put forward anything they're thinking of. I, I'm just brainstorming, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea.
I do think that, um, it sounds like we are in a similar situation as we were with our tax software with this stuff. Doesn't sound like it's, um, there's much support for it and, uh, Sheriff already mentioned that it's subpar. And I believe you've actually looked at this before, uh, based on some of the discussions I've had with people prior to the meeting today. So I feel like this is a, a perfect opportunity for us to upgrade this, uh, this system and, um, you know, without taking a hit to our general fund. So I'd be in favor of it.
Yeah, and it's a year and a half, what did you say, a year and a half out?
It's a minimum twelve months, but they, they released and say it's twelve to fifteen months for this to be a completed project.
I don't want to dismiss what you're saying, I do understand what you're saying, but, uh, but there's some things I think that need to be done in, you know, in a timely fashion and if we're talking a couple of months out, I mean, it's just, it's just more delays that we're in, we're in a time right now where, um, I know where I work, there's constant delays on everything because of labor, um, shortages here and there for everything, materials, everything.
Cost increase.
And it, you know, honestly, that does, yeah, plus costs are gonna be just escalating more and more right now, so.
Right now with ARPA funds, Julian Marie had asked a question on what the balance is. Right now, as a matter of fact, the additional for the American Rescue Plan Act that we're doing later, everything except the ACRSD has already been approved. It's only coming back now because we did not spend it in twenty one. So it's not new, it's what you had approved last year. But the way ARPA works, you have to get it approved if you don't spend it in that year. So approximately out of ARPA, we've got approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand that's been spoken for. And that's before the Regional Sewer District and whatever they do and Dan's, of course. So right now it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand that's, that's been either spent on COVID pay or, uh, other things that have already been approved in twenty one.
And that, to be clear, that is of the approximately three point six million dollars that we received.
Uh, three point four and then we get another three point four somewhere, somewhere around May, I think. So six point eight total is what we will get. That has to be, you have to figure out how you're going to spend it by the end of twenty twenty four and you have to actually spend it on that by the end of twenty twenty six.
So if we approve both of these upcoming ones, that means it'll be around three, nine, three million?
Yes, I think that would be.
It would be about half the total.
Yeah, it'd be right around there, yeah.
Around three, but then we're getting another three, four and bang.
Corey, when do you want to try and do that? Make a list, I mean?
I, I, that's what I'm asking, what do you, what do you guys think? I mean, three, four months or so or?
Looking at something like that going forward, but like with this project and then, um, spent a lot of time last Friday up here, talking to a lot of people and especially, um, our sewer district. And, uh, so both of these projects, I, you know, honestly, I think are, this is a good opportunity and, and. Especially I know that one, the sewer district's coming up yet, so.
Like, like to your point, I mean, I'm just wondering, because if we, you're talking about it, it's gonna be a year from now before you actually look at all of the different things.
I, I guess I'm just asking, I mean, you could probably do two or three months maybe. I mean, say, let's say June, we have a work session on what are all the options that are out there and that gives everybody who thinks they have an idea or an option the time to bring, bring logistics and details and all that. Can hear them all at that time and whether these are included in that or not. And I still think that would be a good idea and then we can be a little bit more strategic at that point.
Stan, you had a comment?
Uh, yeah, I, you know, at first glance, like to Corey's point, it does seem like we're, uh, being a bit reactive instead of proactive. You know, but as, as these projects come forward, uh, you know, they're kind of an at need project that otherwise would have had to come out of, uh, county general. So, you know, by, by addressing the HVAC concerns and addressing the generator concerns and, and now addressing Spillman concerns and, and, um, some of the things we're looking at as far as with the sewer district. Those are, you know, I, I guess we kind of looked at them as, as trying to be proactive on using the money for, for what it was intended for. You know, it, as we move ahead, you know, I, I think it'd be great to have a work session and sit down and look at some of our options. But I, I think, you know, like with upgrading software, I don't know that we'd have been able to do that without this money. And, you know, with, with HVAC, like I said, that would have come out of county general. So it's just been a, a very, very good blessing for us to have this money available to address the needs without having to, to hit county general. So, so, you know, it, it, to your point of, of being more reactive than proactive, you know, I, I think, you know, these are very legitimate expenses, but as we move forward, if you want to have a work session, I, I think we can certainly sit down together and casualize it. But I, I think, you know, with, with the software and the other things that come up, I, we just felt that they're very legitimate.
The, the one problem I see with having something three months out discussing that I got a bid on now is those bids are gonna be expired by the time it gets, you make a decision, we have to rebid things. Like Mike said, the prices, I've had to ask these guys multiple times that is this quote still good? And they said it is, but if we wait another three months, I doubt this quote's gonna be good anymore because of expenses and stuff like that, like everybody knows it's going up. That's the only negative effect I could think of waiting to go out that long. When we get a bid and come to you in three months and then you approve it, now we're four months out, I'm not sure that bid's still gonna be good anymore. So let's keep that also in mind with some of these things, those bids aren't gonna last that long. But I, I do agree with you, um, and I, maybe just don't go out so far, um, to have that meeting. It might need to be like almost an every other month type of a thing because projects are still gonna come up. And, uh, if I miss the June thing for a project now, I'm up till August, maybe to, or September, then I just, I think we're gonna run into problems with our bidding process, unquote.
Yeah, the, the risk of, like I said, both said, cost increase and this is another example. It's been looked at in the past and, you know, it's just like the, the chillers and the, the generators. This is a, a need, not a want, not a, a wish list and the safety and, you know, combining all the agencies through the state and getting rid of our old system. And we have the opportunity to do it, I'd make a motion to accept the proposal.
I don't think we can, right?
We don't have a.
Be contingent on the additional next month.
Yeah.
Yvette, you had a question?
Yeah, I think this is a good project. I think it's gonna be a huge benefit for our law enforcement agencies here in Adams County with sharing information between the different counties. I would just rather, since this hasn't been advertised and the public hasn't had a chance to actually be here, I would rather wait to make the official decision after it's been advertised and citizens have the opportunity to come here next month and voice their own opinions if they do have opinions. That's my.
That'd be next month for the request anyway, right?
Uh, uh, my, my understanding is I need to do an additional request next month's meeting and then we do the vote.
It's gotta be advertised certain number of days before the meeting.
Okay. I'm good with that. I will confirm with, uh, this quote is still good by then, I think it will be. But I'll make a phone call today and if so, I'll do the paperwork to, to do the. So do I need to do an additional request for next month's meeting?
What we're doing is we're going to advertise that you are requesting that sum of money to be used from ARPA. That way the public will understand what's being contemplated at the next hearing. At, at that time, a formal vote and if it passes, resolution would be able to get you the ARPA funds.
Did you want to take your motion off the table or did you want, because we have a motion and a second?
We really need to do that next month, it sounds like, right?
Yes, it's better next.
Retracted.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much.
I guess, was there anything from the officers that they want to say anything?
I just had them support, if you had questions of those agencies, they would be here to answer and showing that this is supported by all agencies in the county, EMS. The courts are also in agreement with the two, the judges can be here, each representing the courts. So if you have questions from the agency, you're more than welcome to ask.
I, I didn't know they had any.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dan?
Is that Spillman or how do you spell that name?
I'll, I'll get that green, I'll get that.
S P I L, Spillman, Spillman.
Spillman.
Just like it's.
Spillman. Spillman.
Mark, you're up, if you're ready.
Different MCT, but there will be an MCT.
Quick and easy.
Just giving the resources. Spillman instead of.
Yeah, we're just hanging with.
Yeah.
I think they're goddamn.
Okay, good, thanks.
Goddamn, I said you guys need a goddamn acronym.
Very true.
We get some of these tomorrow, Mark?
Nope. This is the, uh, annual report that I, our office produces every year. It just shows what, what our office has been doing. So it's really just, if you ever tired at night, can't sleep, read it. But, uh, if you have any questions, there's nothing really big to highlight. We are still, last year, we're on, even though prices were insane, uh, permits were still up. We had over four hundred permits brought in. And you can see on the eleventh page that the total of receipts was ninety four thousand, one forty two. Physical body, that's the, I'm the one number you guys are looking for. You can see the seven year comparison that we put through there. It's been holding fairly steady, the one year it was way up, but we had some crazy things happen in that. Making fine and some big commercial projects. But other than that, it was a eventual year, it was, it was busy again. Uh, that's over twelve hundred inspections.
Sounds like, uh, uh, I'm gonna kind of lead into a little bit to our, the barrier coming up here in a minute, but, um, it sounds like the, uh, the sewage and drainage board has had a positive effect on, on some of these numbers. Is that correct?
Hundred percent, yeah, there's definitely homes being built because there is sewer available. Absolutely. There's two just south of, um, along Salem Road.
Arcade Avenue?
Hey, Arcade, just south of there, there's a couple of homes being built, uh, that probably wouldn't have happened.
Is there a hotspot in the county you see where more than others?
County? No, honestly, no. That might be the hottest because there's two brand new homes going up side by side right now, but that's just one little area. As far as anybody, what we haven't had yet, but it may come, is nobody's brought in any kind of, uh, thoughts for any major subdivisions, you know, that could be out there now. You can put them a lot of places, you could put in twenty lots. If you had, that's the right acreage, you could pull off of that sewer. We haven't had anybody talking about that yet out in the county, uh, that I, that I know of, but, um.
It says the average square foot per home is five thousand?
We count porches, garages, basements, the main floor, so you add all that up. Get a two thousand square foot home, the two thousand square foot basement, you're already at four.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I guess the average, that's what.
And the honest community, again, that's garages, first floor, second floor, and their houses are pretty big. With all their full second floors, they can be over six thousand.
Mark, have we gone any further in the county, county's plan of development per se? I know we had to go through another process to improve the plan.
I guess I'm, I'm not sure what you mean, development?
I forget the name of the, it's approved by the commissioners and supported by?
Well, we, two years, year and a half, two years ago, we changed how we do subdivisions, um, the process. If that's, I don't know if that's what you mean.
Yes.
But we did that a year and a half ago and, uh, there's, I mean, it's, it's been done since, since then. So I guess it has been working, uh, well. Even the, the guys who are doing most of the work, which is MLS and Wim Hof and then there's some outliers, uh, around the county that will come in and surveyors that do the work. It's, it's been working well, uh, to, because now all the remaining parcels are actually surveyed off. You actually know what you have, it's not plus or minus and this big long description. They put a, they actually put pins in the ground and actually give the new description. And so so far it's, it's had very few obstacles or problems, but it's actually gone smoother.
Well, I know Allen County just approved about seven hundred acres of farmland to be developed in the housing.
Okay. We haven't had anybody wanting to branch out like that. We have quite a bit that's actually still in R one that was done four decades ago, thinking things would push one way or another and actually they're getting ready to look at maybe undoing some of that because it didn't push that way. And there's farms covered in R one that technically you shouldn't have farm animals in R one. And so there are some areas, like it goes west of twenty seven and from Walmart clear down to three hundred north. down to three hundred north. Uh, if you're going down three hundred north, you're not thinking that's R1. And so we actually ran into a couple of, couple of issues in those areas. But we have nothing that's come around lately, uh, as far as trying to expand out. Unfortunately.
Thank you. Anything else? We'll need a motion to approve the report as presented?
Make a motion to approve the report.
I agree with that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Julie Marie, um, I know what AIC they were talking about when we have reports like this, we can't confirm the, the numbers, so we're just supposed to just accept it and not make it a public record.
Just accept it and make it a public record?
Yeah, because once we accept, AIC said, once we make this a public record, then we assume liability for the accuracy of the report.
Okay, so you're saying you don't think.
Just saying, don't make a motion to approve it, just receive it.
Just accept it.
Just receive it, yeah, no motion needed.
So just say thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I, I mean, I've, I've thought that, we haven't talked about that, but I've thought that in the past too, so.
What are you trying to say?
Thank you, thank you for the report, Mark.
Okay, good, thanks.
Julie, I've been on other board for a while, you know, they approve the financial report itself and I'm like, I've always wanted that, you know, it's like, what are we approving? You're receiving it, but not like approving it. I've never said anything since like years.
It's been kind of a blurred line, receiving it, we acknowledge it's received.
Yeah.
It's accepted.
No idea.
Jim, vocally?
Me and counsel, Tony and Julie.
Jim?
I submitted a additional appropriation request form last month for your consideration and, uh, I'll explain how we got to this situation. In our county election board, we have a line item, uh, count one, two, six, zero, zero, counting center preparation, county employees. And that line item is what I use to pay the clerk staff when they do election overtime work, right? Since we switched to the new time clock situation back in October, the auditor's office has told me that I can't pay out, I can't pay that way anymore. So they told me that I needed to create a new line item in the clerk's office budget for this year. And so, uh, I had talked to counsel, Miss Julie over here, about how much to put in for the additional appropriation. Cause I went back to twenty twenty, the last election we had, I actually paid about ten thousand two hundred to my clerk staff, cause that was a, you know, the COVID year. And so I had asked, well, you know, how much should I request, you know, for this situation? And they encouraged me to add a couple of thousands, so we came up with fourteen thousand for the request. That's how we, we got to that number there. And, uh, so anyway, uh, that's the situation that we're in here that requested for that.
How did you arrive at fourteen thousand?
Uh, well, when I met with counsel and, uh, you know, we had ten thousand two hundred, we spent the last time and, uh, I asked, no, they said to increase about a few thousand and that's the number we came up with. And it wasn't just me just picking out a number, it was.
To add to the discussion, part of the issue with our office, Jim was referring back to a resolution. There is no resolution to that effect. I looked back and it was before Jim's time, it, it would have been going on before Jim, but I went back, I looked at two thousand thirteen, fourteen, I looked through every single minute, I looked through all, we keep all of the resolutions over the years. There was no resolution that said that they get paid overtime, which is why we said you would have to create a line in the, in, a line in your budget and seek an additional to be able to do that and make it all legal-like. Uh, now as far as any further discussion on all of this, I would defer to HR. I mean, because that's your, that is your thing, you know, the comp time, the overtime, and of course Mark and Julie Marie are sitting here as well. And you know, the, this obviously can lead to a, a bigger discussion, but if you're only looking at this situation right now, in order to do it properly, you have to seek this additional and you have to approve the additional so that it goes into that overtime line because it wasn't budgeted last year.
And you guys understand what he's asking for, right? Is that normally throughout the year, the employees in the clerk's office are awarded comp time for many hours worked over forty in a work week. But during election season, he's asking for those employees to be paid at cash and they've historically done it. It's just we're trying to right the wrong that has been done for years this way and put it in the proper budget under the proper line item where it should go.
And remain overtime versus comp time?
And what, I'm sorry?
Remain overtime pay versus comp time?
Only during election season and Jim and I have talked about it and we kind of felt that it would be best if once the time comes, we would pick a date, he would pick a date that a, the overtime would start and then he would pick a date that overtime would end and that would be made public to his team. It's not like it would just be, oh, we're gonna give it to this employee this week because we feel like it. It's only gonna be for the hours over forty from this date to this date during election
Basically every two years? So in previous years, has it, has there been a, has it been in the budget?
So I have like twenty twenty.
I've always paid him.
Sorry, twenty twenty.
The election board budget.
And it was actually being paid out of the line item, counting center prep, county employees. And it was only paid out twice. So in June, once in June and once in November, which was probably whenever the, um, election payroll was done. So in reality, it was being, it wasn't being done correctly back then because they were just totaling up all of their overtime hours and turning it all in one time instead of like this pay period, I worked ten hours over, this pay period, I worked twenty hours. They were just combining it all and then getting one big lump sum check. So he is correct, whenever we went to timekeeping, it was coming to light, they were working overtime and it need, it had, it needs to be paid when you work overtime, right? You can't wait until, like they started working on election stuff now, you can't wait until we actually do election payroll in say June after election and then turn in and say, oh, well, I worked five hundred hours over last couple of months. So that's kind of where it came. I'm like, no, they're clerk's office employees, they should be getting, if they're gonna get paid overtime, it should be out of their clerk's budget. So that's where me and Shannon said you need to put it in your clerk's budget, cause they technically never had an overtime line item and that's what he is paying is overtime.
So would the election board line item be removed then and just lumped into the standard budget?
Um, it would, yeah.
Well, we'll need some of it because that line item, if I'm not mistaken, is where we pay county employees who worked the election. So like if, if you, let's say that I worked the election for Jim and I was able to get the twenty-five dollars or whatever it is for the day, that's where I would be paid from.
You're talking about the, the people who come in to work it that are not county employees? Better.
And it looks like in the past, it's like, in twenty twenty, there was one, one other county employee, all the rest are his office staff. They got paid out of that.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't even maybe what it was, but there would need to be a little something in there, I would think.
So going forward though, there will be a policy that states when overtime is paid for this, is what you're saying?
I think we need to write a policy specifically for the clerk's office, absolutely.
Yeah, but other, other offices just approve comp time?
Yeah, unless they have a overtime line item.
So what employees would still come out of the, this line item? Cause you've got it, we're judges, you have a line item for judges, clerks, inspectors.
It's the one, two, six, zero, zero.
Yeah, so I'm asking what employees would still come out of that if you need to leave the money in there?
There's an employee in the probation department that I, works every, he's worked every election, so they get twenty-five dollars for working at it.
So it's only fifty dollars a year I pay this clerk for the election. So that's all I need now, right on for this year is fifty dollars.
I mean, since we've done it this way, uh, in the previous years, I think we should go ahead and honor that this year going forward. I do believe we should have a policy that clearly states, and when you work the overtime, it gets, I mean, anywhere else, I'll pace that stuff as you work it. And you've got that already, so.
I don't have a policy written, I can have one for you guys next month, but we cannot do it how we've done it in the past this year. That's not an option. I mean, we can't save all of the hours.
Oh no, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. That needs to be, it needs to be paid when it's worked.
Right.
But as far as paying the overtime, I think we probably need to do that since that's the way we've done it, but once we have, once we have a policy, we need to follow the policy.
Right, I agree.
And we need, and we need to get that done.
But we can't, I don't think that we can pay the overtime from the election board budget, we have to pay.
Right.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Some, I think what is it, like the, cause we have two options, right? One is we say, all right, there is no policy in place, so you gotta do what everybody else is doing. Or option two is if we wanna keep having kind of the exception, then we need to have a policy for the exception.
Right.
So that's what we're trying to say between basically, and I think what he's saying is let's make the policy so that we can keep the exception, but have it be official. Is that kind of what you think?
If you guys approve overtime additional today, then they would have overtime in their budget and then.
They would just have to follow them.
Going forward.
Yeah, then you would just be.
Yeah, exactly.
So she could create, you could do the overtime policy, which we've all been talking about anyways, and then I believe commissioners would have heard that and then go on our policy.
Yeah, and is that, is that your recommendation then that we go with that route instead of saying, hey, let's do like everybody else and do comp time?
I think it would be best because we set a precedent in the last ten years to do it that way. I mean, it might have been, it had been longer than ten years, but, um, I don't think that it's, I don't think that we should deviate from what we've been doing for so long. We just need to get our eyes, you know, guided and teeth crossed to make sure we're in the right way.
I totally agree. But it's exactly what we talked about last Friday.
So is there a way we can reduce this one line item to fifty dollars and move the funds, whatever extra, where it needs to be?
I mean, you can do, you can do a reduction, you can't transfer, you can't transfer from department to department in county general, but you can do a reduction. It's kind of like an additional, so I believe, I would have to talk to DLGF. I don't, I've done it.
Could we, could we just remove this?
You have to advertise this, you're gonna pay to advertise it.
No, 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 they can't. The fifty dollars comes out the other time. This, this needs to be approved and the other would just be money not spent, right?
Correct, it's just that they're not.
Otherwise we have to advertise if we decrease it, right? If we actually go in and decrease it, it has to be advertised and all that crap.
Yeah, cause if you have to, I mean, so I'm pretty sure, and I can, we can, me and Tony can contact DLGF, I believe you have to advertise just like an additional, it has to then come next month and you'd have to, you guys would have to approve it and I think I have to send it to the DLGF and then we can do it.
Otherwise it's just money not.
Literally be taking it out of the budget, so you're not.
Otherwise it just sits there.
You're really building more money to do.
That's just money not spent.
And then during the next budget cycle, you lower it.
Yeah, which happens all the time.
So.
Cause we need to work. That it's being approved and it has to be paid when services perform?
As they work it.
Yeah. So in the past, what they did was they said, okay, this week I worked this two hours overtime, this week was four, this week was six.
Yeah, they banked it all.
Add them all together and then pay it in one month sum.
Yeah.
We cannot do that, we have to pay it as it work it.
Yeah.
So can we approve anything now or do you need to, to something drafted first or?
Just the funds.
Approve the additional. The overtime line item in the clerk's budget and therefore they can, they can pay out their overtime.
Yeah.
That's, realistically we're transferring it is what's happening, but.
That's, yeah.
I mean, that's not what you're actually doing, but really that's what's happening. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Move it second, did you approve the fourteen thousand dollar amount? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is difficult, all these lawyers got involved.
I know.
Jim, you'll budget this in twenty twenty-three by way of line item now?
Yes. I think it'll better now it's cleaned up and.
This is pretty serious. I think the city district has it.
Mark, are you ready?
Morning.
Morning.
Did everybody get the, uh, presentation that was emailed out last Friday?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I hope everybody had a chance to go through it. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time flipping through all the slides. I assume everybody's already seen it. I'll make sure that, uh, Eric and Jim have one because they wanna see what's here. That video, as we start talking about things, you'll know what the spelling is. Okay, uh, the other thing I've also prepared here that I'll give everybody, it's also another summary and, uh, that really kind of boils down the numbers that are contained in the presentation that could be helpful. Touch that iPad screen for you.
Yeah.
Barry, uh, provided information to Ben's office and Ben's office had information also obviously from their involvement in the project to put this together. And so, um, you can see it's broken down into basically three parts here, the historical background, I'm not gonna spend too much time on that. We've, we've been through that a number of times. Created in two thousand and nine by IDEM, seven member board of trustees, uh, three trustees appointed by the commissioners, two by the county council, and the one each by city of Decatur and Burn. Uh, the original project, number one, uh, had three service areas. It took over a year to get our treatment agreement finalized, but the city, um, originally the city of Decatur, uh, was going to do and did maintenance, uh, for us and billing and the district, once we got into project two, the district was able to absorb that and take that over themselves and save some, save some money by doing it in-house.
Mark? Mark, can I ask?
Yes.
So the council has two appointments and Steve Bailey is one, who's the, our second one?
Who's the other council?
Is it Nate? Nate Rumschbaug maybe?
I thought he was sitting in Decatur.
He's mailed, no, he got switched over. That's the, when Nate left the city, then he got switched by, uh, and that was when Donnie Bergdahl came on and I believe Nate, Nate got transferred over. I'll, I'll double check and let you know.
And when is that term up? When will we be reappointing that position?
Uh, councils, appointments.
They're staggered terms.
Yeah, they're all staggered. I believe councils is next. No, you just, you just appointed Steve and his, the other one must be later. I was, when I first seen this, I was thinking that council had one, but, uh, but I know commissioners got three and I know the two cities got two, one each, so it is council. Cause I used to be appointed by the council. I was appointed originally by the council.
So we knew of one position that the council appointed, but I didn't know we had two.
I'll check into that, get back, but we'll, we'll check and I'll have Brooke maintain the list of all that, when those appointments are up and we can email that out.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know if maybe, and we've covered this before, but originally project number one included Lind Grove and Bobo and then at the request of USDA, both those areas were taken out because, uh, they didn't feel that we could, uh, service those areas at the, at the rate that we were trying to do it at, it would have, it would have required a much higher rate. And so those two were taken out. Project number two then, uh, did the Revar Bobo service area and down highway thirty-three and that added, uh, additional connections. Uh, this is showing the original project, which was USDA, the original project, four million, five hundred, ten thousand, uh, grant funding in that project was only two million dollars and I know we've talked about this before and you can kind of see. said and done than what was originally anticipated in about 2009, 10. We also ended up with a higher treatment rate than what we wanted. And so that kind of all contributed to where the rate finally got set at $93.30. Project number two then, and that was 230 connections initially. Then the service areas are all listed here. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. The whole presentation is on the website. The maps are there, so you can see that. Shows the lines, all the connections, the lift stations. That was Monmouth Pleasant Mills, Arcadia Village. Project number two then, we did funding through SRF, which is state revolving fund. That total cost was $2,212,000. That project was funded 100% by grant from SRF. Added additional 100 connections. We were able to keep the service or keep the user rate at 93.30. Again, the maps and the lift station are shown on the presentation. Then project three, which is a project that we're, the district is completing now, again through SRF, and you can see in that instance, it was a $9,881,000 project. So it was a very aggressive project. We got $8 million in grant money. So when you look at that ratio, it's, you know, like 90, 10, or 80, about 80%, a little over 80% grant money. But we did have to, the district did have to borrow 1.8, so that has to be repaid over 35 years with interest. Added 375 connections. In those areas then, that's Preble, Barrington Woods, Clemslake, Peterson, and Lind Grove. So we did bring on Lind Grove. In that project, we had to negotiate a, a treatment rate with the City of Burn, and we got a very favorable rate, we felt, for that. And so those projects are being completed right now. Again, we were able to, the district was able to maintain the rate at $93.30 without increase. So all those areas are shown. So project number four, that, that is, originally, we had additional areas in project number four in our application, which was approved. And it, it again was about a $10 million project, but when, and it took a long time for them to respond and say what they would grant, and it was, they limited it to 5 million. And so we had to take, the district had to take several of those areas out in order to be able to do a project and hold rates. Otherwise, they would have had to have borrowed a lot of money, and they would have had to increase rates. So they shrank the size of the project down.
Cut it in half.
About in half. It's going, it's just for the Oakwood, Yostwoods, Oakwood area, and then the Sunnybrook addition, and then some, some connections along the main lines, surrounding area. So again, that's anticipated 174 connections. The district has bids now. They, they got very favorable bids, and we're just, right now, waiting on, we're, we're either gonna borrow 1.5 million dollars, or if the county approves the use of up to 1.5 out of ARPA funds, then the district will not have to borrow. And that is kind of summarized here on this. It's in the presentation, but it's also on the summary, and shows that if we don't have to borrow the 1.5 over 35 years, at the interest, we'll avoid six, the district will avoid $690,000 in interest and avoid the total repayment of $2,190,000. So that is the purpose of the request. We have a sewer district meeting Thursday. If the council approves the appropriation, then Thursday, we'll notify bond council, and in fact, we'll notify them today that we don't need to borrow. The rest, the council does have to adopt a resolution, which simply is putting your additional appropriation in writing that says, yes, we've approved it, we're committing the funds. I take that written resolution, give it to SRF, and then SRF says, okay, we're, we'll go ahead and close on the, on the 5 million, and then the other would be funded to the county. The county commissioners would need to execute an interlocal agreement, basically a subrecipient agreement between the commissioners and the sewer district, that says that the sewer district has to use the funds according to the rules under ARPA for the expenditure of those funds. And they have to follow the same rules for spending those funds as the county would follow. So we just have to make sure that we do that. So we would create a separate line item, separate fund. Those monies would go in, and then we would have to keep receipts and document those expenditures under the rules for spending ARPA or fiscal recovery funds. So, yes, I have a question.
So, like, on this project, on this paper that you gave us, the $1.5 million that we're borrowing, I'm assuming that the user rate by, the people that are hooked up to that will cover the cost of that over that 35 years, paying it back?
Yeah, yeah. If we borrow the funds, then, then it'll all have to be repaid out of.
Right, but the user fees will cover that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep. Let's see, we've got, that's the Oakwood-Sunnybrook area. Probably one of the most important slides and I wanna show is economic impact. So the total expenditure and project cost once project four is completed is $23,103,000. Infrastructure, total new sewer infrastructure, 33.5 miles. Total sewer infrastructure, including project five, which will, we anticipate to get funding for this summer, would be 40 miles. Building improvements in the district service areas since project one started is $6 million. That $6 million is, is additional building and in, in, building improvements and assessed value that has been added by people building homes, wanting to connect to the sewer. That, that was not part of the original project. That's the type of.
$6 million of investment because of the sewer.
Correct. Because the sewer is there. A $6 million additional investment in Adams County because there's sewer there.
Besides what's there. And that's mostly all associated with project one. Project three that we're just finishing, people haven't been able to start building on new, on bare ground yet, that's coming, you know. But project one, except for Decatur Diamond Die and Fleming Excavating, is all in project one. So project three is a big hit. I mean, we got lots of footage of main in the ground. We got lots of homes being ready to be built. So that's, I can see that tripling with what, in the same amount of time, with what we've added because of all the property now we're going along, you know. So, and it's, it's a nonstop, people asking, can we get sewer run to us?
I was, I was up here pretty much all day Friday, and Barry was kind enough to spend about 45 minutes to an hour with me and talking about this stuff. And I was kind of leaning towards it then, and after talking with Barry, I'm definitely, and seeing some of them. So also, I mean, when you start talking about homes, you're talking, what was that number two for? I mean, so.
Revenue to the county.
Revenue to the schools.
Oh, to the schools, yes.
Yeah, like for home is.
It's like 80% of the taxes go to schools. And the bottom line, too, is all them homes hopefully have kids in them and filling our schools. I mean, it's a multiplication of this whole deal, you know.
But I look at, you know, obviously, we've all made the decision to live in this community for, you know, most if not all of our lives. And honestly, when I think about that, we don't want to be living in a decaying community. You know, so we, you know, we like to see some growth. I think the economic development impact from the sewer district is, is really huge for us. And so I definitely think it's, I mean, I'll, I will definitely, you said it's gotta really be 1.4 and change, something like that.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a full 1.5, but I mean, we're using that because I.
Well, bottom line, you're gonna go forward with it anyway. It's whether we help pick up the track to save 690 interest payments. And it, it also, but it'll help, you know, bring people into our community. When people are looking to move, are looking for jobs, so this helps bring employers, helps bring the employees, and, you know, just that really helps support our county and our communities. And so I think this is doing a great job, way better than I even anticipated. So, thanks for your time last Friday.
Thank you.
And Mark, too.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact of spending money to save money, too. And then, like Fred said, the development impact. The, the big thing that I'm, this 1.5 is helping is maybe we can start Pleasant Mills, there's a house that's 300 feet from the end of ours. Maybe we can start doing some of those to get, there's a new house being built. Now, I told them that, you know, they gotta pick up the whole tab. We have a house down on, off of 700 South, ran a half mile. The homeowner ran a half mile line himself to be able to build a house on the farmstead. There was a contractor that bought a piece of property, put the grinder out in the middle of the field. There's no house there. He's planning on building a house. You know, there's so many homes staring us in the face. You know, I can't keep grinders in, in stock right now, grinder pumps, because they're also, everybody's calling saying, I want one, I need one, I'm building here. So it's just, I mean, it's amazing how it went from 2017, when we started this, that people were in the meetings and commissioners, I don't know if there's many commissioners here that was on then, but, you know, we was getting yelled at left and right, everybody. But now it's the opposite direction. We got people asking, you know, can you get sewer to us?
Even potentially some housing additions that would have otherwise not been.
Yes, there, there's one on 300 East that has inquired to us on the next.
Where? On 3 East and what?
Uh, 600 North over, that's in our next project already. The, the, the surveyor called us and said, can you get sewer over there? Because they, I ain't gonna say the name of the farm, but it's, they wanna, they wanna develop that. I know the, the housing addition that's already platted behind Monmouth, that is in talks. There's 22 acres just south of Priestgrass, that field along there that comes out on, that's for sale for development just for homes. There's a lot of things outside of everybody's eyes that's going on, and I'm hearing about it every day. And it, it's actually overwhelming me to be able to keep the maintenance work up and doing all this with it. I mean, it, it's keeping us busy because of all the new development that's rolling with this. And I'm hoping maybe by you guys helping us out, we can start, you know, helping get, move this development along and create more homes.
Yeah, the district has to kind of, has to shift gears into, you know, that these projects are funded and are designed around septic elimination projects, because that's what SRF will give you this extraordinary amount of money for. But what the district has to do, as long as the district has enough revenues coming in, and they don't have a lot of debt, then all of a sudden, that cash flow can free up to be used for private development or partnerships for private development, where the district can say, all right, we will extend a line down here, and we'll use our money, or a portion of our money. Mister developer, you have to pay a portion, and we'll pay a portion. And as the homes then develop on there, those connection fees are the cost to connect, and it's recouped by the district. But the district has to have money that they can use to do those sorts of things, because SRF money can't be used to just go down a county road that has no development in the hopes that they'll be building. And they don't fund those types of projects, but the district can. But the district has to be financially healthy and able to do that. And that's what, that's what this, that's what we're hopeful that this will do. But that's up to you. The commissioners approved, they, the, it's a, it's a two-point process. The commissioners approved 1 point, up to 1.5 billion in ARPA funds for this project number four, but it's subject to appropriation by the county council. That's been advertised. That's what is here today. If the council approves the appropriation, and I've prepared a resolution, I think Julie Marie maybe sent that out to you, that simply just documents it so we can say to SRF, hey, here's where we're getting our money, we're not going to borrow, and then they'll go ahead and close. We're supposed to close on this project in, in early April, because we've got a 90-day bid hole, and we got bids early February that were very good, but we've got to let, we gotta close. We can't award the contracts and issue a notice to proceed until we've got the money, and we've got a commitment. Either we're borrowing, or we've got money coming from the county. Then, then we can turn it loose and construction can start, because I'm sure you all know materials is a, is a big issue for contractors, and, and they want to get them ordered as soon as they can.
So is this a motion to approve appropriation?
Barry?
Yes.
Do you or the board have checks and balances in place concerning these projects? I went down 700 South and talked to all the residents that answered the door, and they were very unhappy. I got my ears chewed off from all the negative comments concerning the contractors and the condition they left the roads, their properties, is there.
That stuff is not done yet. I've been telling everybody that I can, that they have to come back and reseed. They, the fault, they, they had too many leaks at the end of the year, and it drove into non-seeding times. We have a contractor from right here in town that is in charge of doing all the reseeding. And actually, if you hear complaints about the paving, that's also gonna be adjusted, addressed, because our county superintendent for the highways and myself, we're meeting again, we're not happy with the paving. That stuff all needs to be fixed. But seeding, fixing yards up, all that stuff has to be done yet, and we're holding money over their head to do that. Anytime you have people complaining, I know, I, I respect you guys taking it, but have them contact me, or Larry, or the board, any board member they can contact, you know. And I generally can put a fire out pretty quick. I mean, there's been issues. We've got them taken care of. I know Steve and myself have worked on some, but we'll get, we have a lot of repair work yet to be done. The, the side ditch is off, they've never been seeded yet. So they all need to be addressed. All the holes they dug, they looked for dang near two months, digging every 13 feet or 20 feet for every seam to try to find the leak, you know. So we, we have a lot of repair out there yet. And, you know, I appreciate you taking it and listening to them. I hope, I hope you understand that we'll get to it. You know, I have, that's another part of the job that you don't like, but we're getting through it. And it all has to be done to our specifications. We took videotapes of everything from before. So there's a videotape of how everything was before we started digging, and it's gotta get back to equal or better when we're done. So, and what I'll do is, if people are complaining, you know, when we get done, if they still have a problem, let us know now, because it's easier. If they got a one-year maintenance agreement, and everything's gotta be fixed. You know, we got one year, and that just started in October, November in there. So we got till October of next, of the end of this year to get that stuff done right. So what, you know, there, there's still time. I mean, majority of the seeding, or some of it got done, but not, not along 700.
Yeah, the condition of the roads was, was the big complaint that they left.
The paving's terrible. That paving contractor was, I don't know, was our county superintendent engineer. He knows. And, you know, we've already blackballed them. They're not allowed to pave the next project. They were refused.
They're all done.
They're, I, I won't tolerate that.
Who was it?
Huh?
Who was it?
Not Ian B., but what was their name?
Alex.
Brad?
That's our sponsor.
Yeah, we don't need to say that.
Will those repairs be started as soon as possible?
What's that?
Along 700, the road and all, would that be one of the top priorities?
So if it's dry enough, the contractor knows he's gotta do that, yes.
And there's retainage held back on final, yeah, final payment, so they're not gonna get paid until it's done. We hold retainage back for those reasons.
Of course, it's not happening as fast as what the citizens want.
No.
We just can't do it.
And they're still very, they're still very upset about it.
Yeah, there, there is a season to it, too. I mean, planting season, seed season, and road making.
It'll probably be. And there's retainage held back on final, yeah, final payment, so they're not gonna get paved until it's done. We hold retainage back for those reasons.
Of course, it's not happening as fast as what the citizens want.
No. We just can't do it.
They're still very upset about it.
Yeah, there, there is a season to it, too. I mean, planting season, seed season and road making. It'll probably be May before they do it. You might get some dry weather in April, but probably not, probably more in May. The farmers get going, you know, that they'll, they'll drag a Harley rig down through there and hit it.
Mark, are there other projects that might be compromised or not done because they're giving this much money from our budget?
It, it, this, it just potentially would affect a rate increase. You know, there's, there's other projects coming, but as the district has to borrow each time, then the likelihood of having to increase rates, uh, it goes up substantially.
We've never had a rate increase since we started in 17, and the board has been, been very adamant that we don't do a project that would run prices up. Mark hit the nail on the head earlier, our first project, we was, we was on needle and thread. I mean, we didn't buy equipment, we didn't buy anything to, you know, brought stuff from home, the board worked with me and that was when we was by myself and, but we made it. Now we're, the, the second project helped, we got 100%.
I'll, I'll make a motion to appropriate up to 1.5 million for, uh, is this project four he said?
Yes.
Project four was your district?
Oh, seven.
Okay, second, then Julie has a resolution?
Uh, we did vote on it.
Okay. Uh, move to approve the amount, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye. And I just wanna be clear, I'm, I think it's a great project and I think if, if I was able to see all the projects, I'm sure I probably would vote yes for this one, but I just had a good conviction, I just, I wanna see all the projects before we spend that much. But I think it's a great one.
Needing all the next ones to go or the, what we've had done?
Not even you guys, all the hard part of it.
Oh, okay, that, okay, that's you.
What, what was that with, how did everybody vote? Everybody voted yes, except Corey, no, okay. I just wanna make sure I had it right now.
You get that resolution, Julie?
Yes, it's gonna be resolution number nine and, um, I'll give it to Dennis to circulate to everyone.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. You can, you can register your votes on that resolution, too, so.
Alright, thanks for the work you guys put on that, that was.
I do very much appreciate this. I mean, it's, I know it's not my system, but I treat it like it's my system and I'm, I'm very proud of it. I mean, compared to everybody else, I got other counties calling us, asking how we're doing stuff and.
I think when we, when we, in the states, you just do, I mean, we kinda had this conversation before, they're probably a little more inclined to give us more funding, aren't they?
They have been.
Since the next project's been approved, we should hopefully get that five mil, the second half of last year's funds and that would really, you know, that would be, then I hope we're done. We've had the county tore up for a while, but it, it is, I mean, I, I honestly, that six million in expansions, I look for that to really take off and I hope to keep that going. The commissioners asked for those numbers and things like that, so I hope to see that really climb. And I'll try to keep you informed of it.
You'll get back to us with your second council member?
Yes, I got it, Brooke down, Mike?
Yeah, let Brooke know and figure out exactly who's appointed by who. Maybe, maybe they got it messed up, I don't know, but there's seven members. I know the city and, uh, Decatur and, and Burne appointed a member and then the rest of the members are appointed by county commissioners and council. So maybe the commissioners appoint four, I just off the top of my head, can't remember. But we'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, alls.
Mark, you just get that to Bree, that iPad.
Who gets it?
Bree.
Bree, put that here.
Yeah, I did.
Hey, we have a grant application. Carla Marvoff from the Health Department cannot be here. The commissioners had already approved this at their last meeting and it is, uh, simply a grant to pay back for vaccinations that were given to the Health Department. The, the amount, I don't even know if we're getting about.
Six, seven, money, or you need just like that?
Basically, we're getting money to recoup the money that was spent on vaccinations. Uh, move to approve, second.
Aye.
Corey and who?
Fred.
Fred?
Do you wanna mount there Tony, the amount is?
I'm gonna have to look it up, I don't have it off the top of my head, I'd have to, give, give me a few minutes. Because I got this done at the, the amount was, uh, $48,056.24. $48,056.24 that we're getting reimbursed. You decide there and there's gonna be two of them.
That's from the state, right?
Yep. There we go, now I got that.
Yeah, I agree, they're definitely.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, see what they all want.
Do we have a vote on that?
On what?
The grant?
Yes.
Oh, actually, I don't.
I don't, we voted on it. Dennis, we still need, there was a motion and a second on approving the grant, we just need to vote on it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Thank you. How are you?
Good.
Alright. You run out?
Nope.
Good. That's last year's. Alright, um, we're here today to submit our annual reports to the Department of Corrections and share this information with, uh, the council. It's a requirement from DOC that all grant-funded agencies submit an annual report to the advisory board, the council and the commissioners. So that's what we're here for today. So, I'll go ahead and go first with, uh, my report, the 2021 annual report. You can see the financial information in the first, uh, group of boxes there. Finished the year with a project income balance of just over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we finished with a little over 14,000 for our CTP balance, the bottom two boxes there that I'm speaking about. The, uh, program last year, we had 146 participants in our home detention program and 48 in our offender education program. We assisted the sheriff's department with the GPS tracking of 24 work release inmates. We had 104 students in our out-of-school suspension program. The total number of days, um, as you can see in the next group there, we had 14,423 days of adult home detention monitoring. We had 527 days of juvenile home detention monitoring, 651 days of, of, uh, community transitions monitoring, eight, 1,830 days of work release, and there were a total of 471 days of out-of-school suspension. The next group talks about our average caseloads. 95 of our participants were low-risk, 86 were moderate and 29 were high-risk, with six unknown. The average caseload. The next, uh, group there talks about our cognitive education programs and how many participants were in each class. Classes were down last year with the COVID pandemic. Turning the page. We had 69 out-of-county transfers, we completed 262 hours of community service, we administered 1,220 drug screens. There were 19 disciplinary hearings, um, and as a result, 76 community service hours as a result of a sanction. And out of the 1,220 drug screens, there were 32 positives. And I only considered those who were post-baseline and not including their prescriptions. So it's a true dirty drop or dirty drug screen. So after they came onto the program, 36 or 32 positive, uh, drug screens. This is a little, um, chart there of what the participants tested positive for. As you can see, THC or marijuana was the top, um, with fentanyl being next, which is just alarming.
Is there been, is fentanyl trending up?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Uh, things that we're proud of are noteworthy, noteworthy accomplishments. We, we supervised a total of 322 cases. We had a 96% successful completion rate for the home detention program. What is amazing to me, as I shared to the board last night, I track recidivism every six months. I look back at the past three years for felony completions. Uh, look back to see, uh, anyone that's been arrested and convicted of a non-traffic, uh, crime. So we don't include driving while suspended or no insurance, but, but new, new arrests and new convictions. And over the last three years, our current, uh, recidivism rate right now was only 10%. So 90% of the people who complete community corrections have made it up to three years without being convicted of a new, um, crime.
How does that compare to the national average?
Keys, I, I don't know the national average, I think DOC is around 18%. If I'm not mistaken, the last time I checked it, but it's substantially lower.
Good.
Is that tracking people that have moved away, is that tracking everybody or is it?
The only way I can track is Adams County, so that is, that is a good question. That's only Adams County arrests, so if they were to leave the state or leave the county, go to Fort Wayne, at this point in time, I don't have access to that data. So basically, I'm going through the sheriff's book-in records.
Well, not yet.
Right.
But with Spillman, he'll have that information.
You gotta derail this.
So, that's a real good, good idea. So that's where that data comes from. Looking for, uh, we do a satisfaction survey with all of our participants. And so each participant completes a class or completes the home detention program. We ask them a variety of questions as to whether they felt like they were treated fairly, whether they felt like they were on the same page with their, um, instructor or their case manager, whether they felt like they had the same goals and objectives. And so our education classes had a 97% success, uh, success rate, uh, as far as satisfaction. 70% of our offenders who were on our program for a minimum of 30 days, uh, were given an additional specialized assessment, um, in addition to the required IRAS assessment. IRAS is what the state requires us to use, so, use. So 70% of those people that were in our program for 30 days or longer received additional assessments to help us get down to maybe what some of their more in-depth problems are. We did 25 IRAS, IAS, which IRAS is the adult, uh, assessment required by the state and IAS is the, uh, youth assessment. We did 25 interator, inner, inner, internal or external, external, I can't say it, reliability audits, with a 96% of those being within two points. So what that is, is our case managers are certified to administer the IRAS assessment, create a case plan. Um, 25 times last year, two case managers did the same IRAS assessment and then they compared scores at the end to make sure that they were on the same page and that nobody was off or, um, it's somewhat of a subjective assess, assessment. Um, we had an 89% overall success rate for home detention, I'm sorry, satisfaction rate. And last but not least, we completed 361.5 hours of job-related training with 70% of those hours directly related to evidence-based practices. Falling asleep, Tony?
Nope, I am wide awake. Every time Dan talks, it wakes me up.
Are there any questions for me?
Thank you. So I'm Baltimore, I'm the manager of Adams Behavioral Health. So we're contracted with the, uh, jail treatment program to provide counseling and case management for the inmates, um, who have substance use disorders. Uh, I do apologize, it should be 2021, it all says 2020, so, my bad. So based off of, um, our total numbers served last year were 66. Uh, average caseload was 16, uh, low risk one, moderate risk one, uh, high risk was 14. Uh, lowest caseload was seven and highest caseload was 20. Uh, we define risk based off of the DSM-5 diagnosis of a substance use disorder. So it used to be just broken down to abuse and dependence, now it's broken down to three different categories. Accomplishments, uh, despite the COVID-19 challenges, um, we have, uh, continued to stay on track with meeting the needs of the inmates, uh, and the grant objectives. We even practically planned if we, the jail had to close again, we worked with, uh, Sheriff Mahor on a solution so we could still provide the service. Uh, case management services have been increased, so there were no inmates that were released to be homeless. Uh, there was a 64% in, uh, completion rate for offenders completing minimum treatment recommendations before release, which is a 55% increase compared to the year prior. There was not a waitlist to start treatment during 2021 due to increased case management services. Numerous reports and written communication, uh, from inmates voiced thankfulness for the program and the staff for helping them change. Inmates expressed that, um, it also helped their families' lives as well. Many women were connected to our local crisis shelter, uh, slash centers in our community. Uh, jail staff have been more supportive of the program, seeking out our services in order to help inmates that are struggling and they, uh, have also referred struggling inmates to the program. We used to just mainly rely on the kiosk and the inmates reaching out, but now we also have, um, the officers reaching out to us, uh, as well.
I'd like to add to that. Because of the COVID, their services, I've curtailed them coming in a lot of the times because of operations, so on and so forth. And so that let the jailers become the counselors, which they are not trained for. And I think that's why they got interaction more with the inmates, got to know them better and realized this person's struggling, that's why they reach out to the program. So COVID was bad in some ways, but it's also good in some ways. But it really showed, uh, the confinement officers, like, yeah, their need is needed. And I don't think they, they truly felt that before until they got to be the ones listening to these people's problem. People open up to them, that's when they're like, whoa, huh, this is not my bailiwick here and I don't know what to do. And they didn't wanna say things wrong either, so like I said, they encouraged those people getting in touch with Baltimore and his staff and it has made a difference, it really has.
Any questions? Wrapping up probation, um, to clarify, we had, um, two different probation officers funded by the probation or the DOC grant last year. So it made it a bit tricky to try and, uh, track those numbers in this report, so I'll clarify. Where some I know for sure was through the DOC grant and some I had to do for the whole office to make this work. So last year, probation expended $71,047.62 out of DOC grant. Out of our project, uh, income or our user pays fund, um, in the calendar year 2021, we expended $92,867.91. Some of the boxes don't apply, um, going to box number 10, the total amount of restitution collected from our office last year was $99,498.56. In, uh, prior years past, I was able to, uh, get the data just from the DOC grant, put it officer in their caseload with the problem of figuring out whose cases were, were funded at the time, it was very difficult. So I just put in for our whole office. So last year, um, the probation department collected 3,638 drug screens as an office and 416 of those were tested positive. I, uh, was not able to take time to go in and see which ones were prescriptions or not, but overall, that was about 11% of our drug screens were positive last year. As for funding our operations, $63,974.98 was to fund, uh, DOC probation officer to, to moderate, high mod, high, moderate risk, um, felons. So that was the total number for one full-time staff. That officer, or those officers served 80 people. The part-time field officer, we were able to get that funding the second half of 2021, so that's why it's only from July to December, for $3,365.14. And that, um, officer was able to contact 44 people at their homes, um, or employments last year, so that was.
So that was a new, big thing we're proud of to also keep up with. Caseload summary, the average caseload for the officer, probation officer is twenty-eight. They don't supervise low risks, so we don't have that available. Average caseload size for moderate risk felons was thirteen. Average caseload size for high risk felons was fifteen. And then lowest caseload size was twenty-two and the highest caseload size was thirty-four. Some accomplishments we had in twenty-twenty-one, DOC officer created a new incentive program for clients. So we're looking forward to try and grow that into this year. We finalized a field schedule to ensure field visits are conducted routinely and also randomly. So that way, it's not like every Tuesday afternoon, we're stopped by Jack Ogle's house. We're gonna try and keep it every different time and different day, so they're not expecting it. Maintain face-to-face contact during the pandemic. The DOC officer assisted in closing out the drug court program, facilitated the startup of the drug, or the grace probation program. Our DOC officer also completed Level Two CGS security test and also completed fifty-two point seven-five hours of continuing education. And the follow-up report is a requirement for organizational chart, it's pretty basic. And I believe that's all I have to report on this. Does anybody have any questions on anything you can answer?
Jack, do you know what your collection rate is for court classifieds and fees?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I actually just met with Jim and Jamie a week or two ago and we're working on trying to get a report from Odyssey on that, actually. So I'm hoping to know more about that in the near future, but I don't know if I can to try and work with tight budgets with the pandemic and stuff like that. I don't have a good number for you at this point.
So Drug Court got replaced with Project?
Grace Probation.
Grace, okay. So that, all, does all that seem to be, we're getting better than Drug Court, all that?
I'd say it's a better use of time and resources. Because they're still getting a lot of the same services, it's just they're being given the services in a different manner, which I believe is a more efficient way of doing it.
Is it happening a little quicker, like the goal?
Yeah, so Jack and I absorbed most of the Drug Court funding. I absorbed most of it, Jack got some as well. And what we're doing with that funding that we got was Project Sunrise, I think they were thinking of, which is the counseling services that we have set up with the Bowen Center and Behavioral Health. And it's going real well. Our participants are getting in to see a counselor or therapist or skills coach very short period of time. I mean, that, it all works together and that's why you see these low recidivism rates and successful completion rate, high successful completions because of the team in Adams County that we have.
Yeah, I think that was noted on the week, or the bill of ability of services immediate.
Because it was taking weeks for them to be able to get an appointment, so now it's days.
Yeah, we had six weeks to get in to see the local community mental health center at times just to get your initial appointment. My biggest complaint was if I wake up with a fever, I don't have to wait six weeks to go see my doctor and get, you know, prescription to get better. Why should our participants wait six weeks to get better when they have, you know, suffering from addiction or mental illness? And so Project Sunrise, it's just, it's amazing.
Thank you.
All right. Just, I think we just need a motion to, we need a motion to approve the submission or, I don't know.
There seems to be the consensus that we're not going to approve motions. We're just going to go in and wrap up the thing.
Thanks, guys.
Jack has a additional under probation. While he's here, do you want him to address any questions you might have on his part-time additional request? If not, we can just approve it later without him here. But if you have questions about that, you can.
This is just a little normal DOC grant?
Yes, the part-time DOC additional got missed on our budget last year. So just putting in to add that we have it formally on the budget. And then Rod's pretrial grant, we didn't have that grant back prior to budget time. So that's why I put an additional in. We do have the money, we're just trying to get it formally on the record, so. Otherwise, yeah, things are pretty basic. But if you have any questions, I can come back over.
Well, I mean, I was thinking if we just approve all these as one later, if we had questions, he might be gone, so, you know.
Grant money, right?
Yeah. Thanks, Jack.
I didn't really have anything except for to mention that with regards to concerns about spending of ARP money, I would propose this. I'll go through and make a list of everything that we've spent so far. Just so you know, Golden Meadows made a request, the Sheriff's Department's made a request for the Spillman and obviously the Seward District. Everything else, though, have been internal requests approved by and then brought over from the commissioners with regards to things we needed in the county. So, so you're aware, it does not appear to be a pattern that there are a lot of requests being made outside. And I would anticipate, these are probably the biggest that we're going to get. But for future use of the money, it would be probably very helpful for you to know exactly what's being requested and when. And I also have, I'm working on a form that we can disseminate, if you think it's appropriate, to department heads to enable them to be able to present something to the council. That I would suggest a process, maybe something by which they send it to the auditors and the auditors can send it to me. I can research as to whether or not it's even a viable request under ARP procedures and then provide it, the information to you and allow them an opportunity to plead their case to ask for the funds. That's just a suggestion as to how we might do that. But I will get you more information about ARP, what we're doing, what's been done so far. And you can address whatever kind of procedures you'd like to do.
Yvette?
Tony, where are these ARPA funds being held? Is this?
There is a grant fund. Well, it's in the treasurer has the funds.
No, I mean, how do we, every month we get a financial report as to line items, as to how much, how much was spent, how much was received concerning all kinds of funds.
It's in Fund Eighty-nine Fifty.
Eighty-nine Fifty, okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Eighty-nine Fifty is the fund.
I think on there it's American Rescue Plan Act, I think is what it's called.
That fund was created by a separate ordinance and split in place back April, I think it was April twentieth last year.
Yes.
Because I looked that up for that resolution.
Did you have to do that before we?
That's, that's all that I have, thank you.
I guess it's my turn. We have two amended salary ordinance submissions. And one is part-time, Jolene Turner, fifteen dollars, fifty-one cents, retro to three, five, twenty-two. And if you want to get them both together, we also have deputies, Patrick Piper, which was effective two nineteen, twenty-two at thirty-one, fifty-seven. And Robert Johnson, two nineteen, twenty-two at twenty-five, eighty-eight. If you have questions on either of those two, Sheriff Dan is here. If you have a question on that, I think the EMA is a replacement person, is that correct? Part-time, or right, not full-time, or part-time replacement in that position?
Is motion, motion approved?
Unless you have questions.
Was that a part-time position, the last?
Yeah.
Was it?
EMA has two part-time deputy directors.
Other than your full-time?
There's one full-time director at times, but the other employees are.
One second.
Who, who made the motion?
A little bit. And John? Correct.
Moved and seconded, all those are favored?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, and we have additional appropriations. The two in County General, you've already approved during the course of the meeting, so that's already been done. We do have one for adult user fees. And of course, you, you want to do this more on time? Do you want to do them all together? Do you have questions on any of them? The Rescue Plan Act, you had already done the AC-RSD. So I guess the other ones, however you want to do that, or we, you know.
Need that resolution to be adopted and signed, so maybe.
And that should be going around.
It was, and it's been signed.
So all three of them that are left then are all have to do with grant money, right?
The only one, breathe the adult user fees, what, what is that? Is that, that's not County General, is it?
Both of them, I don't have any.
Twenty-one hundred?
No.
Okay. So, so that's part of the rest of them, that's not in County General. And I already spoke to the ARPA ones that were already approved. We just have to bring it over to this year because it wasn't spent in twenty-one. So they were already pre-approved, we just need to approve them again for SBOA. Any motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Keith?
I'll second it.
Ething. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
I think that's all I have.
Okay. Another matter is properly presented. Corey wanted to spend some time in, in conversation with the budget preparation. Corey?
Yeah, so I think typically in April, which would be next month's meeting, we decide what kind of guidance to give the department heads for submitting their budgets. I think you guys give that time in May usually. I think that's how that works, that they submit the budgets back in June. The typical budget process is that in April, we give guidance to them.
To the department heads for?
Usually in April, you guys will tell the auditor, like, what we need to put together in the letter of what you guys recommend these budgets as far as increases, whatever. And then we send it out usually first week of May and then usually due back to me by June first.
So what I was hoping to do, since we're a month ahead of that, is start that discussion. And I put some numbers together and then I know Shannon met with Wage Board and we did some discussions on that too about what actual raise numbers would look like. So instead of being kind of at the last minute trying to figure it out, we got a little bit of numbers in advance to try and think this through. So I just wanted to get the conversation started, I guess, chew on everything so that next month, we can have had the time to think it through a little bit and give some good feedback to them to tell what, to the department heads what to think. So, I mean, for me, my thought would be, I mean, you guys know I've been a little bit concerned about how much the budget has been increasing. I don't really want to cut anything and I think that's going to be really hard. So I feel like one of the easiest ways to sort of get it back under control might be to simply just say that top line item in all the accounts, let's try and ask the department heads to freeze that number. So we would end with a budget that's the same as this year. Effectively, what you're doing is you're letting inflation do the work for you. Instead of cutting, it's doing the cutting per se, but you're not actually cutting. I think we had about two point six million of unspent money last year across all the accounts. So if we can utilize as much of that, so even though a budget may stay the same, it wasn't all spent. So let's use some of that before we start budgeting more. And I realize that a lot of that comes out of, I think almost half of that comes out of road stuff. And I realize you can't transfer between accounts and all that. But most of the accounts, all but maybe ten or so, were pretty far under, which is what you guys have been saying for a while, that we're not spending while we're budgeting. So that's not a surprise. So that would be an idea too on that, something to think about, is that let's try and ask them, when you put your budget together, can you keep that top line the same? And I think that we're going to have, even if we don't raise any tax rates, I think we're going to have higher revenue next year, just because you've got, across the board, you've got higher property values on the income tax. You've got a lot more people working than you had last year. So you're going to have a lot higher income tax and the wages went up. So across the board, I think we're going to have more revenue, plus the fact that you've already got all this unspent. So we didn't decide anything today, but let's just kind of get the conversation going, see what people think.
The, there is over two million unspent, but only three hundred and fifty thousand or so is in the general fund that, that was unspent. And, I mean, I don't, it's fine to request that, but I, I do think we need to try to make sure we have it as realistic a budget as possible, because nobody likes having additionals, but we have them. So, I mean, one thing that's definitely gonna, that we have to keep in mind is, I mean, right now, we've seen fuel skyrocketing and it's, that's not going down, at least not anytime soon. And when fuel goes up, everything goes up. Everything gets shipped, so the price of, the price of everything will increase. So I just think we need to be very cognizant of that and be aware that, I mean, they're gonna, there's going to be increases. So, I, I don't know, I think that's a, again, we can request it, but I think that's something that's going to be hard to do.
Corey and Cory, Bree and myself spoke on the phone the other day. Fred came up as well. You all should have received an email. And I think Yvette had worked on some information along with Corey on funds and so forth and so on. Bree spent some time denoting on that sheet what is grant funds. She put the statute, the Indiana codes, next to each of those so that you would know those specific uses. All you'd have to do is look that code up and it tells you there are only certain uses that that can be utilized with. And I think Fred mentioned the three hundred and forty-one thousand that was actually unspent in County General. The rest of that budget is somewhat beyond our control because it's, it's rates that are set. They, they, they get their own tax rates or their user fees or their grant monies, this kind of thing. They aren't tax-driven like County General is that we set. But, you know, it's, it's a good thing that we're all talking about this now and getting all this information out there for you to digest and think about and look at. And then next month, hopefully, we can come up with some guidance, like Cory said, on moving forward and what's realistic and what we, what we can effectively do as a group, as a team. So.
I appreciate that. Shannon's probably going to want to spend a few minutes talking about the, some options for numbers. But the other piece, so that's like the budget piece. And the other piece that you guys know I've been talking about is raising taxes. How much, when we keep raising the interest, the rate, right? So I know that the income goes up when, when there's more values and things like that, but I'm talking about the rate going up. So I know this may be a whole different discussion, but I feel like we should be playing into this now because when we're building the budget, we need to be thinking about what is the revenue so you can make sure it all balances out right. I would like to start thinking about if we just would look into what would it do if we don't raise the property tax rate? And that'd be the first time in a long time. Leave the rate right where it is. You know, other counties can go up and down, but we've gone up every year by the maximum the state allows. And I think we're going to have a lot of higher values next year. So we're going to get extra revenue and you do have a lot of unspent. So that would be my suggestion that we, as we build this budget out, try and see what it'll look like to keep that rate the same instead of increasing it.
I, I would like to ask if it's okay with you guys. My chief deputy has been here for ten years as of, what, this week, last week?
Saturday.
As of Saturday. She's worked with budgets for ten years and if she has anything at all to add, I, I hope that you all would allow her to, to speak for a minute.
I just, I pulled up the location budget, which shows line item by line item, as of twelve thirty-one. And I just for County General, like, I'll use our department. So out of our three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-one budget for twenty-twenty-one, we had four thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars left. So their budgets are being spent, but I mean, it's like, you know, we had nineteen dollars in one line item, so it's just you have pennies here and there. So if you flatline budgets, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to tell departments to have to flatline whatever, they really are spending their budgets. But, you know, like in our payroll line item, we had seventy-six hundred. Well, we had somebody leave halfway through the year, so that affected that. If you're wanting to give raises, I don't know how you tell a department not to increase, kind of like how Brett did say, I mean, fuel prices are going up, office supplies are going up. So, they can flatline, there is money that's not being spent, but it's kind of, you would have to, I think, nickel and dime these other line items, is it really effective to move? Tell them, oh, we'll cut twenty dollars from here, and you don't know for sure what they're going to spend. So, but I can run this for all of our funds and send to you guys too, so you can see line item by line item. But when we have budgets, the budgets that go out to you guys, it always shows what they spent for that year too, so you guys see that a bunch of times. But I can send it this month if you want to see it before next.
I mean, could we just use last year's, this year's budget, or the one we're currently on, to do a, I guess, a practice round to see how it, I mean, that's without asking them, the department has to submit something, you know? We could essentially use what we already have right now, right, and then adjust the rates and see what would happen? Is that hard to do? For you?
Like, is, like, you mean, use this year's budget to try to figure out what we need to do for next year?
Yeah, I mean, using Corey's scenario as asking to freeze, freeze lines, just apply what rates we would use or anticipate using for next year.
I mean, I think you go, I think you bring into the factor then of not using the growth, the growth quotient. Because you're gonna, you.
That is, that's exactly what I'm saying.
The growth quotient plays into your tax rate, so, and honestly, we haven't got a growth quotient yet, I don't think, I don't think we get to April or mid. So we don't have growth quotient, but then you're going to go back to the whole scenario last year of the state, Baker-Tilly all said that they, they're, I think Baker-Tilly or one of them told us, there's like one city or town, county in the entire state that does not use their growth quotient. Everybody takes their growth quotient, because if five years down the road, you have a project that comes up, or you need that money, you can't go back and get it.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to. The one thing we don't know either yet to even run our scenario is, we would need to set values, and we don't have that, right? That's not, that's. One of the things too about inflation in general is, you know, I heard a report on the radio a week or so ago, that they, you know, the official reporting rate of inflation is, of course, at an all-time high of, it's like seven and a half percent. But the one thing that they don't really report, and that's not included in an inflation report, is the price of gasoline, the price of groceries. They don't include that. So it's not really a real number. And the, the real inflation number is really probably much higher than that, so it's something we have to deal with. And I'm not saying we increase it much higher, but we, those are the realities that we live in right now. We need to, we definitely need to keep that in mind.
I know, I mean, even office supplies have went up. We shopped around in our office for a box of paper, right now it's almost fifty bucks for eight boxes of paper. And we honestly ended up going through Sam's Club to.
Fifty bucks.
And we went through Sam's Club, and yeah, we had to get six boxes, but I think we ended up only paying thirty-two dollars, I think it was. So, and I know that that was something kind of me and Shannon kicked around yesterday, was, would it be beneficial to do a centralized office supplies, instead of everybody buying their office supplies? I know there's departments that, when they get to November, December, oh, I have a thousand dollars in my office supplies, I'm just going to order whatever to use it up. So there's different, I think there is different ways to bring the budget down without necessarily saying we have to flatline. Like, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to flatline without people then coming next year and asking for a whole bunch of additional anyways, which in the end, that's the bottom line anyways.
And just to be clear, I don't think that you would want to freeze every line item, I think you just want to freeze the top line, you know? And say, you tell me, department, you know your budget a lot better than me. You can see where you didn't spend, and can you readjust that, you know? Figure it out where it can be the same, find the things that you didn't spend, and see what they can come up with.
What would you tell, so what do we tell the departments, like, oh, you tell me, like, so we had, I guess we're, we're a bad example. Okay, so say we had used all of our money, say we kept our staff for the whole year. We don't have money to reallocate, like, we don't, we can't really move money around, like, we have two hundred and twenty dollars in a line item and seven hundred and sixty-two. Yeah, you could bump that up somewhere, but that is literally saying that for next year, you're going to spend the exact same thing on every line item. So then you're back to, well, if office supplies, you know, if any of the prices of anything go up, you then don't have the money to really transfer, you don't have, you know, you're, if you're going to put in raises or, so that's kind of why in years past, before last year, it was always, they kept two, three, and fours flatlined unless they knew of a project that was coming up. And then in the one, is where you guys would then say, hey, do a two percent, three percent, whatever you guys are recommending for salaries. And that's why they kind of wasted that.
Well, that's why I was asking, I don't think we need to ask the department heads to do an exercise for us. We can, we have their numbers right now. I guess, I don't, maybe I'm interpreting this wrong, but we have their numbers, right?
For this year, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I really think people just need to do a realistic budget. The bottom line is do a realistic.
I know what you're saying, Corey, I, I'm just, I don't think it's necessary to ask that.
I'm just looking at it as an easy way, because I think going in and cutting is hard, but if you can find a way to just keep that, like, if we have ten percent unspent, can we use as much of that as we can before raising taxes again, before spending more, like, it's already there, so let's try and use that. You know, and I know we've heard quite a bit that our cash, even though the budget is upside down, we've been saying that's fine because there is so much unspent. So I just want to use that, I guess is what I'm saying. And then if that really is true, do, do we need to keep raising the tax rates if there is, if there really is extra money?
I just think a lot of it, like, kind of Tony said, is it's, it's in funds that don't affect tax rates. It's in funds that, like, a lot of the user fees that get paid in, they're not, it's not your tax rate, it's not your tax-driven funds that aren't being spent. So I can't, like, the two point six, I think of it, I know MBH did spend over a million. Well, I can't take that million dollars from MBH and put it into county general.
And I, so a thousand percent understand that. I guess I'm just saying, there's forty-two accounts on this list. I think only eight or so of them spent more than was budgeted. So all of those accounts, and I realize they can't necessarily transfer between each other, but, you know, just kind of running through it, there's, there's a lot of money there that we can work on. I mean, I'm looking at E nine one one, I saw that one. They've got almost fifty thousand of unspent, you know, so there's money here that we can use in these accounts before you go to just budget more. Like, let's try and be a little more creative with it.
And Bree and I talked about this yesterday, sorry, and I don't mean to speak out of turn, but one of the things that we were talking about, once we talked about office supplies and kind of stuff like that, was can we increase, and I think Sherry said this, can we increase just the wage line items, but leave everything else the same? I mean, because if they're not spending all their money anyways, then why does it need to go up again? And that would give us an opportunity to stay up on inflation in terms of wages, but then still ask the department heads to try to be conservative when it comes to other line items, is what we kind of chit chat about.
Yeah, and that makes sense to me.
I could pretty much tell you the DLGF, we have a new guy, and it was the guy that trained the guy we had. But every year that I am aware of, they, if we don't accept the growth quotient, they will question that. They will question that and say, do you really want to leave money on the table that you can't go back and get, not knowing what is going to happen in the future? That's what they're going to tell us.
Well, I guess.
They will recommend not doing it. Or, I mean, they will recommend accepting it.
And I guess just to flesh out what I'm trying to say a little bit, if the state changed their mind tomorrow and said, all right, the growth quotient is no longer four percent. We're going to tell you guys that you're allowed to tax up to thirty percent. Just because they say that doesn't mean you should, and I realize that a lot of other counties are taking the full amount. But the idea that you're leaving money on the table, I don't really like that, because that means you're taking it from taxpayers. And just because the state says you're allowed to, doesn't mean it's good policy. So that's where I'm just asking.
I, I agree with what you're saying, Corey, but the risk you take is if you don't have enough money because of things that might happen, then you're going to have to cut people or services, because you will not have that money.
I don't think we're taking an absorbent, an absorbent amount of money from, so I just run, run the numbers. The difference between the, the, that difference that's left over is two point three percent of, of last year's budget.
It's ten percent.
No, it's not.
Two point six million out of twenty-six million is ten percent.
Three hundred and forty-one thousand.
You're only looking at county general.
Yes, right now, yes.
All of it is tax rate. All that money comes from taxes.
But what we have the most control over right now is, is county general.
We have control over almost all of these. I mean, we set the lit rates, we set the property tax rates for all these accounts. There are a few, you know, like, user funds and things like that that we don't, but by and large, we do set almost all of these. We get hyper-focused on county general, because it's the most flexible, but it is not the whole picture here.
I don't know of any of the, like, wheel tax, lit, any of those, I don't, it, none of those are at the highest they could be. I don't know that they're at the extreme lowest, but they are not at the highest. We could still go up. I think we're halfway, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, on the wheel tax. We could double what we're taking now, because when we began that, we went kind of halfway.
Honestly, I'm not sure, because, yeah, that was.
You were here then. Rex, am I, am I accurate on that?
I'm right.
I want to say.
None of them are at the top.
I don't think that's at the maximum, but, but you also have to establish between the funds. You know, if you count county highway money that is received as, you know, in your total, and say, well, here we've raised all this money that we didn't need, that's not county general money, that's not property. I mean, when you look at that, that's, that's money that's coming from the state of Indiana, gas tax, fuel tax. Yeah, they didn't spend it, but it can only be spent for highway-related purposes, not for county general purposes.
So if you want to use the wheel tax, that's a good example. I mean, we do set that rate, that's our decision. It's six hundred and fifty thousand is what we brought in. We only spent eighty-seven. We left five hundred and sixty on the table.
Well, a lot of that funds that are, that's left in there is held aside for projects that are still ongoing. A lot of that stuff that you guys, you just see a line item, you don't see what that's there for. I mean, some of that stuff is set aside for, for, we got Bridge one oh six coming up, where some of that is community crossing, but we have to pay a portion of that. Comes out of Keene Bridge. Some of the other stuff, that we have, roads that we were building and projects we got coming up, we got that set aside. Just because it didn't get used every year, doesn't mean that it's not already spoken for. Our, our, the majority of our budget is already spoken for, for two, three, four, five years out. It's the reason the numbers look, look like they do, but they're just not.
I guess I've been saying for a while now that the tax rates, the amount of tax dollars, taking out of consideration increase in values, not factoring that in. You know, we added more than twenty million dollars in new taxes over the last ten years. And that is not due to property values going up, that's just raw tax dollars. I don't like that number, especially when our budget's only started at fifteen, and it's now almost thirty. Secondly, I do not like that the budget has gone from fifteen to thirty, doubling the budget, I don't like that. When inflation during that time was only about twenty percent of that. And I, separately, sort of, but I'm not as big of a deal, don't like the fact that the budget is upside down. I realize that a lot of it is unspent, which is what a lot of people have been saying, which is why I'm saying, well, if that's true, let's use that money. Let's use the unspent before we start going to other stuff. So, I just, and I think, I'm just asking if this is one of the easier ways, is that instead of trying to cut things, can we try and use some of the unspent as much as we can? And I realize some accounts are only going to have five dollars left, some accounts are going to have five hundred and fifty thousand. So I realize you can't access all of it, I get that. But can we use as much of it as we can, and try and use as much as we can before we go raising rates again? There's nothing to vote on today, let's just chew on this, you know, and next month, we can try and give some guidelines, but those are my thoughts. I know some of you guys were asking, you know, don't just say it's a problem, give some proposals, so this, this is what I'm, just some ideas. So I don't know, Shannon, if you want to, because I know we put numbers together too on some different options for what salaries could look like, so that we're not just kind of guessing, but we have actual numbers. I don't know if you want to go through some of those.
Yeah, so one of the main concerns that I have, obviously, is ever-increasing wages in terms of competition and other employers and things like that. One of my concerns is that we are going to fall behind if we only continue to offer a two to three percent increase year over year. I think I personally made a mistake last year when I didn't recommend that we increase the bands for twenty twenty-two, and that hopefully won't happen again, but we should have done it last year, we didn't, but, you know, hopefully we can correct it for next year. So one of the things that Corey and Evette and I met as the Wage Review Committee a couple of weeks ago, and kind of talked about this, and tried to put some ideas together, one of the things that we thought would be a good idea was to increase the bands and all salaries by one dollar in twenty twenty-three. This would give the higher-earning employees an opportunity to stay level with the lower-earning employees. So obviously, when you offer a percentage increase, then it's based off your wage itself. So if you offer a three percent, then the lower-earning employees are only, are going to get less, you know? And then we get into the same situation that we were in a couple of years ago, where the two ends of the spectrum become more and more, you know, apart. So we figured by offering a, a flat dollar number, then, then that would help us more than offering a percentage. So the.
Does that go to the uncategorized, uncategorized too?
Yes, yes. So I'll, I'll kind of talk about that. So what I put together was this big spreadsheet, and I can send it to you guys if you want to look at it, but basically, it gives a seventy-five cent increase plus the performance evaluation adjustment for all employees who are eligible for that adjustment, okay? For all employees who are not eligible for that adjustment, are offering one dollar per hour increase, okay? So two thousand and eight dollars per year on an uncategorized or an exempt employee. So it, it, it's two-sided here. The only people that I did not include, because I want you guys to address that, are elected officials, commissioners, council, attorneys, ETC, right? That's, you guys need to figure out what you want to do with that. So my concern with increasing those every single year is that with those positions, you're not able to go backwards, right? So in my position, for example, if I make ten dollars an hour, and by the time I've worked here for twenty-five years, I make fifteen dollars an hour, when you replace me, you have the right to take whatever wages you want to pay that position. I cannot do that with elected officials. Once the rate has gone up, the rate has gone up, and that's that. So you guys will have to talk amongst yourselves, or talk about how you want to handle those. But, the overall total that it would cost us to raise all of those positions by one dollar per hour roughly would be about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Now it's all in. That's got the per, that's got everything, all that kind of stuff.
Your Medicare, FICA, the whole nine, yep.
So matches are unspent money of general.
That doesn't include employees in major seats, so like, the shared department, they're all in a major seat, so that doesn't include them. But this is all of the other employees, other than those a couple of categories that I discussed, that you guys will have to figure out if you want to offer increases for, so just something to think about.
And I don't believe that that would affect all, like, county general won't take all of them, except that's all the employees you got to, I think you pay payroll out of other funds.
The other item to consider, or need to consider at some point in time soon, is whether or not you should have the department's budget for comp time over time. But, well, you're going to, you need to talk about it at some point. I'm not going to do it now, but I want them to be aware. We need, we need to talk about it, and maybe have a work session.
And a work session will be set by, I think, by either body, we just have to.
Any questions? Comments, concerns? Is there any other numbers you'd like to see other than that number? I put a bunch together, so.
I'm trying to remember the math. I, I did it earlier, but now I forget it. If you do a dollar, you know, and I, I tried to think, if you have someone who's kind of in the middle, let's just say like ninety-four, what percentage that turns out to be for them? Because I, I was thinking it was like seven percent or something, really, but I forget.
So, but one, yeah, one of the things that we, we also talked about that I put together was, was showing a percentage increase for multiple different percentages, so I did three, four, five, six, and seven. So a seven percent increase across the board would cost us roughly three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. But again, we get into the situation where the employees who earn a higher wage are continually going up, and the employees at the bottom aren't going up as fast as those employees, so the gap gets bigger. That's why we thought that flat dollars would. That's why we thought that flat dollars would be more beneficial.
So roughly, it's gonna be in the same ballpark of about a 7%. Like, that's what that would be. Would you mind sending that to everybody else, both of them, so they can all have, if they can chew on it?
Um, and I do have one more thing, sorry. So this wage package that we put together last year, you guys approved it for me in October. I realized that I never had you sign it. I was waiting for the, um, new policy manual to come out before I published this. So this is my first opportunity to have you guys sign it, if that's okay? Should I just pass it around? That's that.
And one thing I've been concerned about is our cash balances. At one time, I think we talked about establishing a minimum, minimum amount on this. The covers unexpected costs, in this instance, inflationary factors. And I don't know if we've ever really addressed minimum cash balances or not, but I think it's something that we need to look at at some time.
That would probably apply to some funds, but not all, wouldn't it?
Yes.
I mean, I think that's a great idea. I think you could set a number. And I even kind of did that a couple, a year or two ago, and I, I may have said it now, but I think I set it up a formula, so you could put in there how many months of reserves you wanna have. So let's say it's a fourth of a year. You put three months in there, and then it would show you right at the gate what that would be for each account.
Yes.
And most of them are pretty over. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money sitting around, and most of them. Then there's a few that are, that are gonna have a problem this year.
It's just a thought that I had. Makes financial sense to me.
So that's all I have. I just wanted to kinda get the conversation started, so I'm not kinda caught flat-footed making decisions.
Yep, sooner the better.
Are we circulating all the papers that we do sign?
I believe so, and Kathy should have them at the end, and I get theirs on the.
So you don't have to run me down.
Hey, you enjoy coming to visit, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, we've come to the end of the agenda items. Are any additional items to be presented at this time? None being mentioned, we will call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Fred and Kathy, or John and Kathy?
Either one.
For it.
All those in favor? I oppose.